The motion.
Okay.
And I would request of the maker of the motion that we amend it to include signalization of the North State Street and Cunsler Ranch Road intersection. I drive that stretch of North State very frequently. I drive Cunsler Ranch frequently. I'm very aware of the conditions out there. I think it does pose a hazard. It wouldn't be the truck driver's fault. It would be the inattentive public speeding along on a high-speed section of North State Street. And I don't think it's appropriate to approve the project without providing for the signalization. And it would be, in my mind, it'd be a credit against future payments that the company would otherwise make. So it'd be no additional cost to them.
Well, I'm not going to make that part of the motion. First of all, I'm not a big fan of signalization. If, even on reggae on the river, when it's the biggest traffic impock in Highway 101, they do wave the signalization and go back to the manual stop and go because it puts the traffic through better, quicker. So I'm not convinced that signalization at that intersection would be a good thing. There may be a point in time, but I don't want to make a condition of this because, in a way, I just feel it's a small level of extortion to get out of this. I think the project stands on its own merits and they're going to be, and hopefully maybe we'll get some other uses and some other businesses that want to use that road more. So I'm not willing to make that a condition. The motion stands on its own.
You can withdraw your second if you don't like it.
Is there any other comment by a supervisor on the motion? Supervisor McCowen?
I, I'll go along with the motion because I wouldn't want my position to be misconstrued. But also, I do have a couple of closing comments. You know, the applicants say that there's no evidence that this project would be of any economic benefit, and there's no evidence that there is a need for the aggregate that would be produced by this project. But among the many people supporting the project are the plasters and cement masons, the operating engineers, the United Brotherhood of Carpenters and Joiners, Laborers International, general truck drivers, warehousemen and helpers, pile drivers, Sonoma Mendocino Lake Counties, Building and Construction Trades Council, Building and Construction Trades Council of Humboldt and Del Norte Counties, California Construction and Industrial Materials Association, and the North Coast Builders Exchange. So apparently, there's some people that think there's a need for the material and perhaps even an economic benefit. I think staff did a great job responding to the appeal. And one other comment I want to make, there's a great deal of argument about the fact that this project is going to be incompatible with the neighboring lands. And they cite specifically the lands owned by Masonite, DDR, and Dan Thomas. And my understanding is that most or all of these lands, whatever their current use may be, are zoned industrial. And so I think it's fair to evaluate the project based on, is it compatible with the zoning of the neighboring lands? And so the fact that someone may have a plan or an idea in mind for some different use, particularly when there's no project currently proposed for any of these, I don't know what else staff would do other than to evaluate it in terms of the impact to industrial land. And that's what they've done. And the project is compatible with industrial zoning or ag zoning, I believe. Am I wrong? Thank you.
And actually, historically, the footprint where Masonite was built was zoned ag, and it was rezoned by the Board of Supervisors of the time to be industrial, so they could build. I had a general manager, a former general manager of Masonite, tell me, he's now deceased, but told me that every time a surrounding agricultural piece of land came up for sale, that Masonite would buy it and immediately go in and have it rezoned industrial. And it's a good point that you brought up Supervisor McCowen, and that area is zoned for that. I see this project as compatible. I've read all the documentation. I've read all the planning commission minutes. I'm sorry that some of the literature came in late, or I would have dove into that as well. And I'm very supportive of going forward with this project, supportive of the motion. And with that, I'd like to call for a vote of this board, and it will be by the button.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we are going to move on with our agenda, and I'd like to thank everybody. This has been a long process today. Okay, I think we're going to go next to our CEO. And we have item 5C, discussion on possible action regarding direction to staff, excuse me, to return to pre-December 2008 hiring practices allowing the chief executive officer to be the final review and approval authority for all staffing requests under the general direction of the board and adopted budgetary guidelines. Ms. Angelo?
Madam Chair, members of the board, first of all, I'd like to apologize. This was an item that should have gone on the consent calendar, and somehow that got missed, and so it was listed as a separate item. This is really procedural in nature, just a formality as far as returning the authority for hiring to the CEO, and that's the request.
Thank you. Board members? Supervisor Pinches?
Just real brief, Madam Chair. I was the one that originally pushed for this under our previous CEO leadership to get the board involved in this because I didn't feel that our former CEO had the, basically they had the hands-on attitude or experience or whatever you want to call it to deal with that. And I felt that the hiring was just, in a time of spiraling revenues, that the hiring of county employees was kind of out of control. It's not that the positions weren't justified, but we just couldn't keep up with the increase in expenditures. So things have changed. Things have changed drastically, and so I'm willing to put this job basically back in the CEO's hands.
Second. That was a motion.
Yeah, it was a motion.
Was that a motion? Other comments, supervisors? Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I would like to see is the recommendation concludes with the statement that the department head may appeal the CEO denial to the full Board of Supervisors. I would like to see an actual form created that actually is something that the supervisors are in receipt of and that the department heads are in receipt of, and that we make sure that we have an open and transparent process whereby the denial has occurred. There's a step-by-step, you know, obviously, the reasons for the denial, the date that action took place, the reasons for appealing it to the board. And I think that that's something that we need to have readily available to show that there actually is a tangible pathway to actually doing what it says in the last sentence. So if the CEO is willing to support that, then I certainly would support the motion.
I, in particular, would not like to tell the CEO how to implement it, but I do see your point. And I don't know, have you thought about this, Ms. Angelo, about the process that we would use?
Sure. Madam Chair, Supervisor Smith, it is in the write-up that you have with the item that I state that at the very last sentence in the recommendation, if there is a concern to the relevance of the position to fill in public policy, that the department head may appeal to the CEO, the CEO denial to the full board. And yes, I certainly support that. I would hate to have it turned into a workload issue if we have multiple requests, but I have no problem with that. And we could go ahead and write up a policy and at a later date bring it to this board, but I assure you, this can happen.
Okay, Supervisor Pinches?
I don't think we need to spend a lot of time writing a policy. There are several ways. If a department head wants to come to a board supervisor and convince the board supervisor that they need a position or something and that maybe the CEO denied, then that supervisor has the ability at any time to agendize it and bring it. So we don't really need a policy. There's a way to do that if it needs to happen.
Okay, if I could comment, it will not be cumbersome. I just agree with what Supervisor Smith is requesting. It's already in the paperwork, and so we'll make it happen.
Okay, well, I don't want no cumbersome policy.
No policy, we'll make it happen. Thank you.
And before we even go to the vote, we need to hear from the public. Does anyone have public comment on this particular issue? JR, you have public comment.
Please.
The whole place is.
No.
Okay. Seeing no one, we're bringing it back to the board. Supervisor McCowen?
I fully support this. I'm confident that the CEO will do an appropriate job in making these decisions based on the priorities the board has set. How it's tracked is immaterial to me, except that I think the board should get a report on the consent calendar. And then if at some point we start to have questions, we can have another discussion about it. So I think there should be some system of reporting, but I don't want to micromanage how that's done.
I would like to, I don't want to micromanage either how that process is done. I think it can be done within a report. It could just go forward.
Yeah, Kent's CEO just in her reports if she heard, hard for new people to report it, or weekly.
I'm going to say we are all getting tired. And I see the sheriff coming in. I'm going to reread the motion that was made. Supervisor Pinches, that the board directs staff that all hiring return to the pre-December 8, 2008 hiring approval process with the ability for department heads to appeal any CEO denials to the full board if the public policy is affected. That is the motion. There was a second. Who seconded?
Supervisor Colfax.
Okay.
Seems like a long time ago.
I'm going to, we're getting silly because we're getting tired. I'm going to call for the vote, and we're going to vote by the button.
Yeah. Move it. Too much green up there.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Angelo, do you have a CEO report?
I do.
Please go forward.
Madam Chair, thank you, and I'll try to make this brief. Let's see. I wanted to comment on a problem that we've had within one of our county buildings, which essentially was mold, and it's hit the papers. So just to be certain that this board is fully aware, that we did receive multiple complaints about mold in one of our buildings, and that specific department, along with General Services, Risk Management, and Human Resources immediately responded, also responding to a Cal OSHA complaint that was filed. All of the information is public record, and there is an OSHA report forthcoming that will be public record as well. And we're assured by GSA that the problem is under control. Okay, along with that, I would just like to report that I will be conducting meet-and-greet meetings with the departments. When I was appointed back in March in this position, I wanted to go out to the individual departments and meet with all of the staff, and I've begun that process over the past couple of weeks. It's been a very interesting process, and my goal is to meet with all of the departments before August 30th, before our budget hearings, to hear that feedback. Additionally, all employee forums will be happening, one in Fort Bragg, Willets, and Ukiah, with the same goal, which is to answer questions from the employees about our budget, to really do a question and answer period. I would also like to commend one of our staff in the executive office, Kyle Knopf, who has just informed me today that our budget book is at the printer, and we will have the recommended budget book to this board by Monday. And I'm really pleased at the work of the executive office, and particularly Mr. Knopf, in pulling this together. August 17th is a date that we have a workshop session scheduled. This will be the public policy prioritization planning session that we have been talking about in preparation of the community meetings and also the January public policy development workshops. We were looking at having that workshop on August 16th and then the regular board meeting on August 17th. And with this board's approval, we would like to have that session in the morning on the 17th and then not have a session on August 16th. So there would be no board workshop on the 16th. So we would combine the two days into one if this board would agree.
Because our workload is so light?
Not because your workload is so light, but in looking at the calendar and looking at the schedule for the 16th and 17th, we think that we could actually do both of those sessions on the 17th. So we would have the board workshop from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning on the 17th and then the board meeting in the afternoon.
And besides, we are having a special meeting on August 4th, which is an additional meeting added to our agenda. And I think in July, we had one or two additional meetings.
Two so far.
Yeah.
July's not over.
Good point, Supervisor Smith. I'm sorry.
So again, you know, with this board's approval, then we would take August 16th off of the calendar and do that particular workshop the morning of the 17th and then the board meeting in the afternoon. We could break for dinner and come back. That was a joke.
I wasn't laughing.
We're having a hard time getting through July without worrying about August.
I just have a couple more items I'd like to bring up. One, we know, next week, we're meeting in Covelo, and I'll save the information for the chair on that one. August 30th is our budget hearings, and we are having a fee hearing on that day. And we also have a redevelopment plan annual report coming on August 17th as well. So I think, given the hour, this is probably all I have to say.
Okay, and in consideration of our Department of Transportation Director, Mr. DeShiel, we'll put your report up next. I don't know if anyone has any comment?
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the board, Howard DeShiel, Director of Transportation. The report was fairly simple this week. I thought I might add, talking about the Covelo offsite meeting next week, that I won't be there. I'm actually going on vacation next week. Deputy Director Tom Peters and Kent Stanley will be with you in Covelo to discuss the airport issues and the air quality issues that are on that agenda. And I will have a report we're writing, so that'll be for you next week, and I'll answer any questions about this week, but that's my schedule.
Okay, any questions of Director Shields, DeShields? Seeing none? Thank you very much, and have a wonderful vacation.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to have supervisors' reports, but I do see the sheriff out in the audience. Sir, do you have anything you'd like to come forward with?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As several board members know, we had an incident today that is taken care of, and the information has been related to the media. And tomorrow, the people will be advised of a tragedy that happened today where law enforcement was used during the investigation. We were called to use force. But I briefed the county council, and your CEO are aware of it. And other than that, that's why I'm here, to make sure you understand that everything is taken care of, and if you had any questions, I don't think you would, but if you had, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Sheriff Ullman. And you will be at the August 3 Covelo meeting. I believe you're swearing in a deputy at the beginning of our meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're very excited about this. We have promoted from within our ranks a new deputy sheriff who will be working as the second resident deputy in Covelo. It's a fully grant-funded position, and he's worked with us for about 15 months, and he's a very good employee, and I have every bit of faith that he's going to fulfill the duties very well in Covelo. So we'll fulfill our requirement of having two resident deputies in Covelo. And I'm looking forward to, at 10:30 at the Covelo Library, of doing a public swearing-in of Deputy Sheriff, Coroner Hank Stoffley.
Okay, thank you. And you will stay for the discussion on the National, Mendocino National Forest and plan for, I'll let Supervisor Pinches basically.
Well, it's just what we've asked for is a plan from the Forest Service about the marijuana issues in our national forests.
And the cleanups.
Yes, I will, and I've been in touch with the supervisor of the Mendocino National Forest today several times on the phone because the incident that happened today was on Forest Service land, and so he's fully prepared to do his hardest to help us with this. I've been in touch with Washington, DC after today's incident, and I think that this is just bringing to everybody's attention how serious the problem really is.
And I think that was the emphasis of the board, to try to heighten the level of the problem in our national forests.
I agree, Supervisor.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Board, we need to finalize the request about canceling the board workshop of August 16th, and we can do that by consensus as long as we all agree.
Do it by board direction. Chair, direct. You're the chair.
Okay. I'd rather do it by consensus. Okay, let's move on, and we have supervisors' reports. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The courthouse advisory group met to determine criteria for site evaluation. There is a field trip planned for potential sites in the vicinity. I think I've reported on the garbage ad hoc committee. The tax sharing committee, Supervisor Smith and myself, met with council members Crane and Roden. CEO Angelo provided an update. There has been a request for information from the consultants that would be pertinent to the tax sharing committee. That information is not quite yet received. It's expected to be completed shortly, then staff will analyze it, then the committee will be able to go forward concerning that. We did also have some discussion around the tax measure that the county is putting on the ballot, and there may be some further discussion of that going forward. Also, the Mendocino County Farm Bureau, the Flood District, and the Upper Russian River Stewardship Alliance called a grower meeting yesterday to discuss ways to respond to the potential that the state water board would impose regulations that might be onerous. Various options are under discussion. One of them might involve the adoption of an ordinance by this board on the theory that complying with a local ordinance administered locally would be preferable to dealing with the state bureaucracy. But that's, so that's something that potentially could come to the board in the future.
Supervisor McCowen, Supervisor Pinches?
I got a question of this courthouse committee. The county of Mendocino, before I come on the board, but concluded a $300,000 study, and it concluded the best site for a courthouse facility, criminal justice facility, is in the, was in the Brush Street Triangle. As you as our county representative, are you, I mean, what is the direction here? Is, I mean, is it the county's policy that we want to put it where we spent $300,000 to show it's the best location? Or is that study thrown out the window? Or, because you're our rep on that, I would like to know what.
Well, we.
I'm not set on one location or another. I'm not, but I just want to know, I mean.
Well, and I'll answer if you.
Okay.
In April of 2009, the Board of Supervisors and the Ukiah City Council held a joint meeting, and at that meeting, in lieu of the fact that the county has no money to build anything, the decision was basically made that the county would be supportive of the city in its efforts to cite a courthouse. The city has identified as their preferred alternative a location closer to downtown, potentially the Railroad Depot property on East Perkins Street. So I have generally been supportive of the city position. However, it's a state process. The state will make the decision. There are landowners in the Brush Street Triangle that are advocating for property that they own. If they make a more favorable presentation to the state, the state will entertain that seriously, but ultimately, it'll be the state's decision.
Issues like transportation of prisoners to and from the jails to the courthouse, are those issues being?
Well, those issues are all pertinent, and the potential for the site in the future to accommodate other aspects of criminal justice, but the state primarily cares about building a courthouse. They don't care about the district attorney, the public defender, probation. Their interest is the courthouse. So, you know, ideally, the site wouldn't preclude some co-location of uses, but that's not the focus of the state.
Please let the record show that Supervisor Colfax is departing, and the time is 5:53. Okay.
... for attendance at the state fair, which we all enthusiastically support and love.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. I attended the National Association of Counties, the NACO Annual Conference recently, and came back with lots and lots of material. I'll be meeting with our executive officer and staff to go over some of the, a number of potentially budget savings ideas that were presented at the conference. So what I would like to do is, after I compile that information in a usable fashion, and I haven't had time to do it to date, then I think I would be better prepared at our next meeting to kind of give a synopsis and go over a couple of the highlights and points in the NACO conference.
Yeah, I would like to hear that, and maybe we can set it on the agenda for August 3 to hear it rather than just staff. I think it would be important for all five supervisors to weigh in.
Yes, by then I will actually have been able to organize the material and bring specific things back.
August 3 or the meeting after, we'll get it figured out.
Third or fourth, either one.
You don't want to meet late in Covelo because it's not going to start until 10:00.
We'll see. We'll see how everything is.
Either one's fine, just let me know.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Clerk, did you get that noted for agenda summary meeting so we can get it?
Third or the fourth, yeah.
Okay. All righty. What I have is basically Supervisor McCowen spoke. I'm the alternate to NACO, and I couldn't go. Had children home from Southern California. Appreciate Supervisor Smith that you were able to go, and it did look like a good agenda. I have an invitation. I've been invited by the North Coast Builders Exchange to go on a tour of Community Development Planning Department to look at streamlining the permitting process, and it will be at the city of Sunnyvale. I have made copies. I can only take one other supervisor with me, and if anyone is interested in going with me.
I spoke with Mr. Woods about that today, and I'd very much like to go.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen, that would be great. It is on August 19th, and we'll leave here at 7:30 a.m. and return approximately at 3 p.m. So I wanted to pass those out and get consideration. On August 2, 9:00 a.m. in the morning, the Corps of Engineers has invited a group of people. We don't know who the group is at this point, but it's a limited number, to take a tour of Lake Mendocino, including the dam. And I have signed up for that. I'm not quite sure who else has. Ms. Angelo, you've signed up. That's great. It will also be to discuss, you know, the different issues going on. I'm hearing that about 30 people have signed up so far, so it's going fast, and I think the limit is 40, maybe?
And what time does that start again?
It starts at 9:00 a.m. at Lake Mendocino Clubhouse. But the contact would be Russian River Flood Control and to call ASAP if anyone else wants to go. FERC, I believe that I spoke about the Il Russian River Commission and the concern expressed by. expressed by Humboldt County Supervisors about a letter that was sent out by IWPC, asking FERC to reevaluate and, not really reevaluate, but to review what had occurred with the FERC relicensing, and what people were told was going to happen, and indeed did not happen, something else did, so there were mistakes made. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has now sent a letter to Pacific Gas and Electric requesting information on the water supply, and how all the numbers have changed from what was originally agreed upon to what actually went in the licensing. So, that was a letter sent out to PG&E on July 20th, 2010. I intend to get it scanned through this office and forward it to members of the Il Russian River Commission. So, there's no surprises, and I think that is really important, to keep in touch with them. We're losing Maria, what's Maria's last name?
Kim.
Kim?
Kim.
Sorry. Just went blank. She's going on to law school. I just wanted to make that announcement for the public and wish her well. Also, I'd like to congratulate Kyle Knopp. We didn't get comment back, because I think we got into something else. Congratulations to him for getting that budget put together and getting it to the printer, because we're going to be needing that as soon as it gets back, so we're prepared to go forward. That's it for me. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to adjourn the meeting at 5:50.
No, 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 we have closed session.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you. Teresa, that's why you're sitting there, huh? Okay. We are going to go into closed session. I'll be coming back out and reporting... After, yes, exactly. Okay.
The board approved the tentative agreement with the management bargaining unit. This agreement includes a 10% wage reduction. The action was moved by Supervisor Smith and seconded by Supervisor McCowen. It was a unanimous decision with Supervisor Colfax being absent.
Okay. Any other comment? Seeing none. We adjourn the meeting at 6:10. Oh. A pardon?
Do you have a report?
I do. What'd I do with it?
I have another one for you. Here you go.
Okay.
We also have to recess, not adjourn.
Yeah, we will be recessing the meeting.
And I'm going to start reporting again.
Yes. We will be recessing, rather than adjourning, and we will have our next meeting on August 3rd, Covelo Board Meeting Overview. The meeting will start at 10:00 a.m. and include a presentation by the Friends of the Round Valley Public Library about Round Valley's new library and commons building. Other topics will include a presentation by Mendocino National Forest on the illegal marijuana growing on our forest lands. The board will be having lunch at Dan's Market, followed by a driving tour of Round Valley Airport improvements, the Covelo Sidewalk Project, and the BIA Tabor Lane Improvement Project. We will have presentations by the Air Quality District regarding the impacts of State Diesel Risk Reduction Plan and the state air toxic control measures for the control of diesel emissions. And there will be supervisors. A county van has been reserved for carpooling efficiency, and you can sign up with either Pauline or Tim, if you want to take the van up to Covelo. County Council, what did you say?
Oh, I'm just saying, I have a seat in my car, too.
Okay. And that's a convertible. All right. So, we're not adjourning. We are recessing until August 3rd, Covelo, 10 a.m. Thank you.